So close.
Well, she's gonna be. Why just send Ricky a message now? I think they're partying.
Yeah, they're partying.
Did you go to the court? The court says right now.
Keep walking back to court. But did you see a rose?
I don't know. I think there's hurricane. I saw Sharon Kelly.
Get the passcode for me?
They won my heart.
Yeah.
Asking for a passcode.
Um, Dr. Whitman said it is.
P D S C. Hi Carol.
No password for Zoom. There's no password for Zoom.
P D S C old caps.
They're just texting.
One, two, three, four, but we have to change it for security.
Check you later.
Sorry about that.
Welcome.
Right. Go ahead and follow order here for the November twenty fifth Thanksgiving P D S C board meeting. How do we do the roll call last time?
Uh, just.
U G I've just actually. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, okay, we'll do roll call first. We have a chairman attorney black.
Here, present.
Vice Chairman Jeffrey Moose, Attorney Jeffrey Moose. He actually emailed us and said he won't be able to attend. Attorney. Doctor Ricky Hernandez. I believe he's supposed to zoom in today, so we'll await an acknowledgement when he comes in. Doc, sorry, attorney. Janet King. She is currently trying to log on, so we'll come back.
Okay.
What to remember, Miss Donna. Remember Attorney Jojo Perez there. And remember, Dr. Cristiano Whitman.
Present.
Thank you.
Hey, so uh, sure. Seems we have a quorum.
So that's. Yep, quorum has been established.
Okay, so we may proceed. And uh, do know this was given to these meetings as of years. From the agenda, what's attached to the agenda here? That by working ways notice. Yeah, day November thirteen. So that's all covered, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, so first item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from October twenty eight, twenty twenty five regular meeting. We have a second. Okay, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay. That's for us moving forward. Uh, whole business, see. Uh, we want to do a detailed review of the bylaws uh, now. I don't know if that means line by line, if you go specific items that. Anybody wanted to bring up? I'll open the floor to anybody that. Specifics, I know there were some issues with or some information about changing the. The meetings at least. Oh, I see.
Chairman, if you want to be there, I could do.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
So we'll just go through really quickly. So the first change was face of meetings. Uh, it was previously when I said if you move on courtroom of the screen part of one. We actually haven't had it either. Like years maybe. Last decade probably. So we're changing it just to the public defenders of corporation office. For other places this meeting and and then agenda. Or the notice. And so that's just one point zero one. One point zero two, that's the one involved with the. Right currently it's four Tuesday of the month. Took out. Those lower than four Tuesday of the month for like twenty five years. So uh, I think there's a recommended change to make it. Uh, really up to the board to determine, right?
Right, and then so uh, through that, uh, and it is attached. For an agenda item six A three, a recommendation. For article one point zero two on the bylaws. Um, it's it'll be near catchment, but I'll go ahead and read it out. Um, the recommendation is. To strike uh, language and scene in front of you, so it will come out to read. Regular meetings shall be held monthly. At the time specified, the notice of meeting. If and then if by reason of any emergency, it shall be unsafe to meet. On the previous notice meeting, the meetings may be held for the duration of emergency at such time. Uh, as such other time that designated by the chair person. Um, the justification given for this would be to um. Provide flexibility for the board to determine itself which days meeting can be held based on board member of the. So yeah, just basically generalize the language in there. Uh, if that's what I received uh, as far as proposed language for that section, so I believe it's open for discussion. Any further.
Do you want to go through holes favor?
Oh, uh, we want to go ahead and uh, acknowledge uh, Doctor Ricky Hernandez has joined the meeting.
Everyone, sorry about that. I didn't have the passcode.
Yeah, uh, currently right now, we're that's we're going over the uh, proposed amendments for the. Uh, one point zero two for the regular meetings. So I went ahead and uh, read out the uh, recommendation. Uh, so it's. I believe it's open for discussion at this point.
I have no problem with this. Does anybody have any issues? Do we want to go through all your recommended changes before I talk for any more things or anything more?
Oh, sure. We'll go through us quickly as possible. So one point zero three special meetings. That would really be just a change of. Both three to four, which is required by public law thirty forty. Um, of course, one good word doesn't change. One point five that remains the same. The agenda will be satisfied with fair and they can write for uh, by lot of other. Uh, what he says having a gentle matters uh, introduced. By board members. The form changes from three to four members and. No action will be taken without um. Four more votes. One point seven. So this one method of voting, one vote, remember. Remote as a physically present uh. Uh, during virtual meetings is okay. So the overall. Uh, mentioned the via conference call. Uh, the public law thirty forty allowed virtual meetings. Uh, Guam law for board of commissions. So it's that, you know, you're gonna have, you know, you could have a. Uh, videos conferencing meetings. So what it suggests is that they have to be available or visible. You know visually and as well as. They're able to be held. Um, some. Different boards require that when there are people present during uh remotely. That the votes be taken by a roll call and not by uh. Acclamation. So that's uh, we didn't provide for those who are letting down the road we could. Raise new uh roles regarding uh. You know, virtual board meeting. We should uh, be that difficult. The one point seven method of voting, you know, obviously. Same thing one vote. Uh, one point eight voting rules. They defy majority as four instead of three. That's present to the public about thirty forty eight. And then order business wouldn't change. Okay, so there was a proposed change for. One point zero nine.
That's what the uh, input received for one point zero nine was to change the language to read. The order of business at meetings should include, but not be limited to the following. Um, and this would. Open up the uh, opportunity for the board to have other items like this to discuss. Uh, versus it being. Specifically what is in the bylaws items. One through nine. So that was the amendment basically. So. I think I think.
So the board could just add a new.
Correct, it'll include the items that are in the bylaws currently, but also not be there at the two.
And so that would be like for instance, a lot of, you know, because of the open government laws. Uh, it's hard to discuss matters outside or. And it might not be on the agenda, so it could be a way of. For numbers raising issues for future agenda.
Steve, going back to the. To the voting um. Uh, and and the rule call and stuff. Um. Repeat that again. What did you say? It's not here, but you. Clarify that, please.
So some boards, I think like the airport or. We have, we reviewed some other board number or devil's. So they have special rules where uh, having video conference for being. The airports probably was restricted because I think they eliminate like how certain number a year. But you can do no more than two or something like that.
But last meeting, we decided that we were going to put it in to allow the voting. To be that it be okay to add um, to make forum virtually, we could do that and to. Vote as well.
Yeah, that's great. And so.
So it doesn't have to be written. I'm I'm just asking, I'm saying where I maybe I'm not looking at.
Yeah, no, that's correct. There really isn't any. Language that um. That would have to be a subsequent.
We couldn't add that in?
Or we could add it here, we can develop our own separate rules regarding.
But why would we want to make it separate? Like, we just do it now. And tackle that now.
Yeah, that would be.
Unless somebody else has a reason for us not doing it now.
Steve, just for purposes of today, is it okay that they vote and attend over Zoom?
Oh, no, definitely. Yeah, both blah blah.
So that's not a problem. Our bylaws to just proceed like we're doing.
Yeah.
And into the future without any adoption of a new rule.
That's correct. It's only if you want to specify like roll call votes instead of voice votes. When they're uh, period of more than.
If I may, I think so the current, I I hope I have the the most recent copy that's current says that. A member of the P D S C board is off island during a meeting here, me, he or she may participate remotely if this it as if physically present. So we're changing that because it's you can still be on island and still.
That's correct.
Right?
Uh, Roger.
And I guess to John's point is that. Um, you could be general speaking according to the rules, but then you can be restrictive, right? On the bylaws, you can, you can restrict it more. Um, so we're just kind of taking away that restriction of this section.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
In fact, I wouldn't allow teleconference, right?
Yeah.
Was, you know.
But I do agree that we shouldn't change it because it's it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I that I just want to make it clear so that we're not going back and forth with this. And why? Yeah, just let's state it now for the record. Let's make sure that this we can do both.
Yeah, so the you proposing an amendment that would strike the. The restriction about you have to be off firing.
No, they.
For you to.
You could be off island. You could be off island and attend virtually and the voting could is counted as well. And to vote for an amendment or a chain. As well.
We just talked about it.
It it's just, I mean, it was brought up, I brought it up because it was brought up in our in our other meetings and. They I know like like G I A A, they're really strict about it. They don't allow it. You can join. I mean, you can join virtually, but you can't vote. Your vote doesn't count. But us, we want to make it count, right?
That's.
Yeah, everybody.
So there's the the current language for method of voting does have the required uh. Required of off item, but um, basically we're looking to make it state that a board member may participate remotely. Uh, as if physically present uh, to. Yeah. Uh, and just uh, attorney Janet King is joining. Welcome Janet.
So that's order business that you want to impose.
Uh, no, that was the one I read.
Okay. So article two or composition, really this was just changed to make it consistent with public law thirty forty. And uh. Added numbers from five to seven. So the. You know, specifies two numbers by the. He feels invited by the governor to by the speaker and. Went by the bombard president. Um, two point zero two. These terms two years and there's a term level of two successive uh, full terms. Vacancies, I guess. You see was just. Change whenever the chief justice chief uh. Was elected, so now it'll be. The same appointing and energy S T S thirty days to. And he would appoint acting member delayed until the appointing entity uh. Of points uh, so. Uh, two point zero four, uh, it's just, there's no change. Admin director will still remain as executive secretary. Did we, did we try to? Expand that to include the Florida that's.
I believe we've discussed that before. So the the question that uh, the executive director bring up is uh, you know. In the event I'm not able to attend the meeting, be able to dedicate someone else to act as a uh, secretary. In the past, we usually just kind of um, the executive director would. And have literally present, but we're looking um. Basically just adding language into say order. To that section. But that's.
And then, you know, article three, generally they concern about this. Uh. These are more or less. The same. With really article four for powers, that's uh, probably the greatest amount of changes occurred here because when public law thirty forty created. Uh, specific duties and hours of the board. So we just wanted to enumerate them and add them here pretty much with. Really created the a larger. Uh, bylaws, right? And so everything from establishing standards governing. You know, performance standards, uh, also the formal indigency determination standard. And the different guidelines for establishing that presumptions of indigency. And then the next one, you know, obviously is the point uh, an E D. Uh, then. This one will be, I guess. The Guam law requires approval of five board members. So I'm not sure why it's not just four. And then each term is for four years. And then the rest of the, these are all just. All these are additions or statutory requirements, or at least provided thirty forty. Report duties of the executive director and the. Appointment of the administrative corrector. And then all these, you know, a lot of these. The move uh, we've been doing right before it shall adopt, you know, for system accounting, which. That's already been done and then talks about the CFO. Uh, which, you know, we've we've done as well. Then the other duties that are. In the bylaws are conducted annual performance evaluation for the director. Establish minimum qualifications for each division managing attorney. Right now, there's a minimal qualification for the executive director, but there there aren't any for the management attorney, right? And then, of course, to approve, modify and or disapprove budget requests from the director. And then they'll submit financial budgetary request and reports to the legislature. Legislature and our governors required by law. So like, we do prepare a budget that we the board, someone that approves it. And then we submit it to the legislature. And then these are the ones to adopt policies and procedures. Like bylaws. Then we added all this other language that, you know, was uh. Set up or throughout for G C. There's all these other. Uh, powers of the corporation, including uh, personnel roles, procurement, facilities, property, financial and travel. And uh, so we just added it to the bylaws here. Uh, J's really to uh, follow implement established rules and regulations for appeals and grievances. Uh, this one. Is a little bit incorrect because. This old language uh. Was amended by. This board resolution two dash sixteen. So now the. Appeals board, which is the border trustees will designate a hearing officer. And then the hearing officer uh. The appeals board may adopt reject or modify the decision of the hearing officer. So uh. The director doesn't isn't involved in the selection of the uh, hearing officer. And I think the board pretty much could appoint the hearing officer and then decide the. Personnel matter at that point. Or acting as the appeals board would adopt reject or modify decision of the hearing officer. This was not, this was passed by resolution uh, two dash sixteen. But it was not incorporated into the actual bylaw. So we'll we'll clean it up, make sure it's added to the the current bylaws. Cause I the current bylaws uh.
It's just.
Yeah, it's kind of accurate. The executive director does not um. Designate or delegate it.
So we're going to table all this until next evening, get everything cleaned up and then present it. Present the resolution as a whole. No, it's not what I want. It's what we want. I mean, if like. That's what we're going to do because you still have to clean that.
We can clean it up.
Okay.
Make it part of the next.
Does anybody want to hear anything more from Steve of any of this or have any particular questions about? Uh, more disseminated before in terms of proposed changes and and the current changes.
So hopefully by December, I December will have the right.
Yeah.
Bylaws done and signed off for the new year.
I mean, right now, all the changes really are to make it comply with statute. So. You know, there really isn't an emergency to get it done. So.
There's always the number. So they get it done so that we can.
Yeah, move on to others.
The next uh, meeting is December twenty fourth.
I don't know. But it's on the delay. No, I'm not even going to be here. Now I'm going to be talking in the scope. Got to make that meeting.
So I mean, uh, yeah, it's um, yeah, the next meeting is officially supposed to be, uh, yeah.
Oh, no.
The twenty third, right, which uh, basically uh, Christmas Eve. Um, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, how many December previous? Or maybe there are previous previous Decembers have we constructed for meetings that they always have been? Moved to January or tabled or.
Well, we can do that now.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's.
So that by the new year, we'll have it settled. And unless we make it earlier. We do it like the week of the sixth, the the fifteenth.
Yeah, then I mean, if that decision is made.
And that's okay. We can do that now, right?
Yeah, it's it's really really up to the board if we want.
Well, we want to go to the new year, having the having this all done and taken care of. So I mean, this. If it's if it's good with everybody, why don't we just move it up since we.
Mister Chair, I had a question. Since the bylaws haven't been approved. And. And the um, you know, the 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 fourth Tuesday is not really a. A solid requirement. I mean. I I would, I would recommend to. Schedule the next board meeting, uh, time not so close to Christmas.
That's what I was saying. Yes, thanks Ricky.
No, but I it sounded like there was some thought that we had to have it on the fourth Tuesday because of old bylaws, but since we haven't even adopted these. It seems like it's pretty much open rate at this point. Cause someone said, I think it was Shane that may have said that um, our scheduled date is, but we don't have a schedule. It's not required to be the fourth Tuesday. Since we haven't adopted really anything.
Yeah, so what's what's just been duly announced in the notices is the twenty third. Um, okay, how that changes in this meeting uh, will be up to the board members uh, on either having it before or pushback. Um, we do want to be, I mean, I know it's Christmas, so there will be. People on and off, I then um, of course, we'll check with their own schedules, but. I mean, uh, that those are kind of the options in front of us, I think. Yeah, either doing it earlier or waiting until January.
Would be if we had it earlier, it would be the sixteenth. That would be the sign of December. Because the next weekend, the next week is the twenty third. Of course, Christmas Eve, we don't want it that last week. So. Did it either be on the sixteenth or we scheduled it for January? But.
Oh, it's it's completely up to the trustees. I I would say I'm going to be off island. I would have to zoom in if it were the sixteenth. Um, but obviously I'm a small part of this. Um, and.
And the only other consideration would be how, once we get a date, we'll see how the uh, trend, you know, even transfer into your partner. So we don't have a law. I think that's still well within the timeframe, but putting out notice as far as the.
I mean, we don't really have to have a meeting in December then, right? January is fine.
If we can get the. All the changes put in a packet and um. Trustees can review them in December, vote in January.
Yeah. Do we have to vote on that? Cause we can motion that. Right? We can motion it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I I'd motion it. Anybody say?
To move it.
To move it to January.
Are we? And not have. Just motion it on an open date for January or do we have to pick a date already?
I was, I think. What's the normal date of January?
Twenty seven.
Like so.
Well, yeah, yeah.
We can do it on the fourth. Is it the twenty seventh?
Yeah, the twenty seventh would be the fourth.
Yeah.
But that's if you're sticking to the. For two, so. I mean, if that's far out enough.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
For the twenty seventh. Okay, so.
Okay, I'll be back.
So is the motion to?
Motion is to. Motion is to.
Move December's meeting.
Move December's meeting to January twenty seven. And then by then, we should have. The, all this, the bylaw, the clean version so that we can vote on it. So by January, we're telling ourselves, we'll have it done. Okay. And I motioned it, so. Any.
My second.
Is there anything before we vote on this that anybody wants to add in terms of discussions, particularly with. Since we're going to put together a clean version here. Any discussion about that?
I, well, I had a question on the litigation part. So I, I think the addition was as clients, but that without this expansion to the. Elder, is it the elderly law? Cause I, I just wasn't sure what, what litigation for the public defender's client would be.
So like. Yeah, the clients or employees, but basically enforce any rights granted to the corporation or granted by law. Grant by the Act on the US Constitutional Law Squad.
This is in the statute.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
But that could be elderly law.
Yeah, that, that's why. Okay, okay.
I mean, they have other restrictions, like agent feature.
I just wanted to make sure, cause I know that was the addition, that was the additional language from the old bylaws, was expanding it to clients.
Any other clarifications or discussions before we take a vote? Okay. All in favor of trustee connect his motion? To move the meeting and have a clean version produced at the meeting on January twenty seventh? The normal time. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. All right. I think we're on a. Item B of all. Right, right. Okay. So we didn't really go over this last time we tabled this. So are you guys prepared to sort of day on this? So I, I think when we were discussing, we were looking at what. In essence, to determine what the boards would like to see, we're recommending. In the beginning, right, basic data as far as cases open, cases closed, number of conflicts. We're looking at doing it on a quarterly basis. We're also looking at any other information and this will grow and evolve, right? On any additional reports that may become necessary to make any decisions, of course. Outside of that. In the. Last arrangement with the last board, we did have fiscal updates, you know, we wanted to go ahead and throw that in there. We're looking at, again, going on a quarterly basis, but if need be, we can also do it on a monthly basis. We kind of just wanted to get the feel, I guess, from the board members. So at least at this initial onset of reporting. If that's, if you're amenable to that, or if you're perceiving anything in more detail at this point. And the reason why is if we are going to be in January, we can go ahead and present first order of FY twenty six data in January. That's.
Do we have to vote or just say, does it have an emotion?
No, it's more of us letting us know at this point, you know, if there's anything outside of that, that we think. I'm kind of curious as to see how many cases are going to trial. Versus, please.
Yeah, I mean, statutory, we're required to provide data on like. Number of cases by case type open at the start of the month or new and open that month and close during the month. And then also major case events, how cases would definitely count. Especially, you know, we've had like a couple homicide acquittals this year. So the board meeting would be a good chance to kind of talk about successes that our offices had.
So you want to report that quarterly or that monthly?
Well, we'll report the.
Monthly.
Yeah, I guess quarterly, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, I think in January, we can take a look at the quarterly stats, like, if it's substantial enough to have on a monthly basis, we can always.
But don't worry, if we have highlights, we'll be sure to bring them up.
Is, is there a listing of what the stats would be? Or how, or what, what, what's typical on this, on that presentation?
So the, the best baseline, I think we could probably go from this. We could probably send you like the last reporting that you did with the last word. But yeah, those were an evolution of, you know, questions that came up throughout the years. So those stats represented something, but I think when we were discussing with John and Steve, we kind of went through like baseline things first, right?
Our, our prior board obviously was fairly judicial heavy. So some of their questions and interests and recordings that. Were involved with the judiciary, like how many electronic monitoring applications you guys do, things that this board is probably not going to be as interested in or.
I was just curious about what is being presented, but if we're going to add stuff, I think it might be worth, if it's.
At bare minimum, at least for the stats, we can extract and send out to all the board members what the law requires us to report on. We didn't want to baseline on the old reports because again, they were kind of customized for their purposes. But outside of that, what was given in the agenda as far as cases open, cases closed, well, went to trial. Or any feedback that we can, we can go back and see what we can do to our current reporting and, you know, put something.
So we'll report that stuff out at the January board meeting. And then if there's any other information, you think this doesn't paint the whole picture? We can just modify it as we go.
Yeah, I mean, our stats can get really detailed, like by different types of filing. So. Yeah, can be difficult to read sometimes.
And is the presentation like an Excel sheet or is it like on the thing you have a program where you get this like filter and just start showing like if we have questions?
Yeah, I think we're doing it so right.
Yeah, you'd be, it's a.
Report on Excel.
Okay.
And we have a case management system that generates a report and they take the data.
I.
The other thing I'd be interested in is if anybody's utilizing the investigators more that we had talked about before, particularly on the PAP.
Yeah, that's, I mean, those are going to be statistics that the public has never really seen before. So we are going to generate like. You know, numbers of cases of how the attorneys have.
Yeah.
And we do have some data, I don't know how up to date it is, but so those are things we're working on with the past.
And we make it up to date.
Oh, yeah, we definitely get up to date. Because, you know, my biggest concern is, right, all the indigent defendants have a right to the same level of service that we get at PSC. We want to make sure the private attorney panel, they also have that same support. So we're finding that there, we're having to strongly encourage them to use investigators. We've developed a list of, you know, three or four, we're getting, going to get up to seven or eight investors. That we can tap on. So we, we've actually responded really quickly when a papitrying needed investigator the same day. For a trial, right? And we were able to gather that investment. So.
Yeah, in the beginning, I assume it's going to, it's a culture change a little bit. So we've got to push that a little bit and see where we are. Any statistics you have on that?
No, it'll be really interesting.
But, um, yep. So a, as far as January is being, we can, we'll go ahead and produce it. Uh, you know, if there's a need to, like, I guess, get any more information between now and then, just go ahead and. Uh, it is Christmas.
Yeah, if you guys want certain specific stats, just email one of us.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, may, may I just ask, cause we're talking about the recommended stats? I know Shane, you mentioned, or it might have been Steve, about what might be required by statute. Could you? You, I guess you're planning to send us that specifically in between meetings on what's required to be reported out?
Yes. Yes, sure.
Okay. And, and I was wondering too, you mentioned that there were previous reports for the other board, the prior board that you may have already completed. Could we get a copy of those as well, or at least the most recent one?
Yep, yeah, we can send out maybe the past two board meetings where we've reported out. So you can kind of see what kind of information we get.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And I don't know if you do annual reports on data? If that's something that's maybe done on a CCR, if it's something that could establish like a baseline for us. Seeing what data that we might be wanting to look at moving forward, but it's helpful to see a comparison to maybe prior periods.
Yeah, I believe our, our new statute requires an annual report now. So this will all go towards a annual report. Yeah, and the CCR, so you're correct.
Yeah, so we'll just run the reports and provide it along with the, the bylaws, you know, the final version of the bylaws in December. That way you'll have up to date numbers. We can, we can get FY twenty twenty five numbers.
Correct. Yeah, we can do a year round. Yeah.
Yeah, and just one last thing, I, I saw on the, on the agenda, it says cases open, cases closed, number of conflicts, has some recommended. Stats, I, I guess I'd be interested in like active caseload per attorney. You know, compare that to national workload standards and then maybe even average time to disposition of cases. If that's, if those are part of what you usually track, that'd be great. And then someone mentioned financials. That would be great to hear updates on the financial status, you know, are you getting your allotments or your cash? Cash from DOA and things like that. Wanted, just, those are good updates for, at least from my perspective.
Okay, we can include those.
I, I think Ricky pointed out, are we having to separate like a financial stat and then the, then the actual public defender stats? Or are we, is it like a combined?
You, you, generally, the CFO did have a section in the board meeting where they just gave an update. On everything financial and usually it was resulting from any. Pending payables that, you know, we might have or any receivables you might have. Our percentage as far as the lot ends, so we have to, so that was done on a monthly basis. Not a lot of it really changed, you know, we get monthly a lot of them. So that, that was the basic financial information that was given. Most of the financial information that was hashed out was done during budget, but. Right, so we're, you know, we kind of, but yeah, we can definitely do a year end closing because FY twenty five.
So this quarterly is not financial, it's just the stats within the.
While the, yeah.
But the financial aspect of it was commonplace. We could report on that every board meeting at the time.
Right.
Yeah, it wasn't statistics, though. They, they just reported on like balances or unpaid federal, that are like for us, the grants.
Yeah.
Unpaid federal monies that's owed.
Yeah, you're not like submitting a balance sheet.
No, yeah, no, just a report.
Yeah, and those financial guys tend to be a little prefer than. Like all these attorneys, the meetings will.
During last, like. Which, which financial guys? There's at least two at the table.
Running would be shorter.
One of them was supposed to be six four. Okay. Okay. So there's nothing to vote on here. We, we'll just address whatever you come up with at the next meeting. On the new business updates on the PAP. Yeah, we just want to give updates. Currently, we, we, so we got the PAP into an office space, the DNA building. So right now, this Audrey Torrey is a. Basically standing the office up. We're working out, she's, as far as the updates on what you've received so far, I'll let you go ahead and. If you've received anything from.
You mean, you mean the secondhand furniture, I thought?
Yes, the lovely secondhand furniture.
Yeah, so we're in the fifth floor of the DNA building, Street five oh three. Uh, we are currently using ZLS as our case management system. We have, oh my goodness, I don't know the exact numbers for our appellate attorney listing. But we give it, anytime it's changed, we update the court in that listing. And currently we have twenty five criminal, just for the month of October. Twenty five criminal appointees and twenty seven juvenile appointees. In those two categories. But I will give the quarterly in January.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of procedures we're still trying to work on. The information we're getting is pretty much from the pap attorneys or. But, you know, I mean, ideally we'll get to the point where when a pap attorney is a conflict, they'll just, we'll substitute out rather than file a motion with law. So those are things that we'll try to work on next day. And then we do have like, how many investigators do we have now? Four or two or four?
Four.
Four. And they're more applying. So we have a bank of investigators that are available to our pap attorneys. So it's just a matter of training them to use, you know, and then, so they're doing work that an investigator can do it. And they can focus on the legal side and hopefully, you know, spend more time on working rather than interviewing for.
But they can choose their own.
Well, they'll, they'll just ask us, then we'll send them whoever's next on the list.
Yeah, we try to rotate among the four.
Yeah.
Has anybody been fighting for payment cases with you guys already?
Yes, we received some invoice for payment for, um, work done in October and I'm going through them now, but. Um, it's just a matter of getting the, working with the court to get the actual balance for those cases so that. We're not overpaying the account.
Yeah, so like, like if the case started after October one, you don't have to worry about getting it opened in the court. But if it was pre-October one, then you have to subtract whatever they, they paid out. So then, so I guess every time you get in what you shoot it over the court, they reconcile and send it back.
Yeah, I will, I prefer not to reconcile. I tell them to reconcile with the attorney because. Uh, you know, the, they, the court claims they paid more, the attorney claims they only got paid this much. So. You know, I'm after. You know, pulling sides, but that's the issue right now. Yeah.
And then, you know, there's some requests for expert witness, but we'll, we're, you know, we'll go with what the. Because, you know, I mean, obviously we weren't fully funded for like experts. They gave us, the legislature gave us money for the private attorney kind of attorneys, but. But we're finding out that they hired Chris when he needed second opinion, you know, go, need an expert appointed. And so, but what we're going to do, we'll figure out a way to, you know, tap into the client's trust fund that that still exists to. Fund experts, interpreters. Even attorneys, but fortunately the legislature appropriated some, you know, a pretty, so we're going to be exhaust the one point four million that which. Legislature gave us, then we'd have to, you know, find funding elsewhere. I believe that client service trust fund is still available.
How are we doing with interpreters? We haven't.
Oh, yeah, the, well, the court hired some full-time interpreters. I haven't heard problems with interpreters.
That, that seems to be going really well. I mean, it's a division at, at the judiciary now, so that's not something that. We need to worry about funding at least this, this, just for them.
But at our request, the interpreters respond pretty quickly. Yes.
Yeah.
Did they have any other issues of pap attorneys or?
Uh, no, not really, except, you know. Then some of them need to be coddled a little bit. You know, it's all unusual.
Any new applicants?
Uh, we did get, uh, two new applicants, one in the misdemeanor category and one today, just two minutes ago, got approved in the appellate category.
What, what was the total number again? The, of the pap attorneys?
How many?
Twenty five and.
No, no, I'm talking about quarter point. I'm talking about quarter point. It's for the month of October.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's?
Yeah, let me, let me find that out right now. I can answer your question one moment.
And we've been receiving the allowance, so we haven't actually paid anybody out yet, but we have some money, right? I just don't know.
Yeah, you sent it on the last. You sent it on the approval.
I did, didn't I? So for the felony cases, there are. Seven attorneys for misdemeanors, there are six for the juveniles. JD and pins, there are. Two active. Okay, the other two are on pause. That's, yeah, okay. For the garnet items, there are. Three active. Three active. And for the appellate cases, there are. Eight.
Most.
Louisiana's appellate is popular.
Yeah.
What's and then part of the stats, we'll see the fluctuation between like those numbers, right, um I guess when we produce them, Shane? So uh kind of see like how we're doing with the path attorneys and. Whether or not we're struggling on the numbers or not, okay?
I will report that we are struggling, especially in the Garnet light and category.
And and we'll be able to tell how many attorney has, but how many cases you're turning on?
I will be able to tell that from October one.
Do you do you know um why we may be struggling as a lack of expertise in that area? Available in the bar right now, or is it just like a waitress, do you have any inclination as to why?
That's a tough category, did you wanna?
There it's the cases are just uh overwhelming, overwhelming, there's more more CPS cases being filed with more kids. Um you know, and then if it's an attorney, they might hit the cat pass if there's like eleven kids in that household, so.
Yeah, it's just interesting that they have more juvenile appointments than criminal.
Yeah.
But.
It's just they've been asserting, CBS been asserting a lot.
Well, because for a juvenile case, I mean, for a court appoint, for a felony case, you you'll appoint one attorney, one defendant. For a juvenile case, you're talking about a appointing to a mom, a dad, and then the children, that's already three appointments.
And then if there's a dad, a dad, that's four.
Yeah, yeah, if there's dad, one and dad two, I mean, in the perfect world, it could be eight public defender, APD and CLC, right? But once there's conflicts, and you're talking about three different court appointments at seventy five hundred per appointment. Times three for one thing's case.
That's a case that lasts eighteen years.
Yeah, and yes, yes, and yeah, see, I was trying to reserve until. I was trying, but I I'm learning so much that it's boom in my brain, right? You know, and so I'm just trying to figure these things out. And then when you have, you know, as another example, when you have seven kids, and then you have two different households, and the guardian item needs to go and visit. Different households, you know.
And then they're.
By different schools.
Cause now you have kids in different school.
Yeah.
To the chairman's point, though, is are we, is this historically? Have we ever had a good number, or his like historically, we just uh it's just been bad, uh I guess. For me is, I'm curious on whether or not there's a trend where we've had good numbers before and we don't now. Whether or not there's something that's happening currently that we can approve.
A lot of the family attorneys are either retired, I mean, no longer practicing, and many don't do family.
I think the most divorce, they had like five or six.
Yeah, well, like those cash is out, it's only, I mean, the ones that used to do it are no longer practicing.
And it's such a specialized area of.
Well, anybody have any other questions on it? Okay, well, any other public discussion?
Um yeah, if I can, we'd like to uh formally introduce our new CFO, uh Sir Goodie Rosario. You joined the team officially yesterday, he comes uh with twenty five, about twenty five years of experience with the Department Administration. As their deputy financial manager, so we'd like to introduce him to the board, welcome him to the team, uh he's. Pretty interesting, deciding to join us, so uh Goodie, do you want to say anything? I didn't see.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, uh it's uh it's my honor and pleasure to report for you guys, uh. And I already uh looking at the uh. Uh trial balance as as of September thirty twenty twenty five, so pretty much uh I have a report to uh. Uh Shane and and Stephen, so we can discuss if they're okay with what we have.
And we did uh meet with Mr. Goodie, cause we know uh budget season will be upon us before we know it, so uh he's sparing everything away, so we can. Put something together for the board. Yep. Yeah, that's all from myself, yeah.
Welcome, Goodie, and um and we'll be looking forward to hearing from you, so let me go forward. Um any other public discussion for we?
So happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yeah, yeah. We're missing all of you. And so we've decided the next board meeting will be in January twenty seven, uh with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before I motion, um I just for transparency purposes, are we gonna keep the same time, twelve thirty?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Please, please, at some point, maybe we'll look at meeting in the PAP.
Yeah.
Just theory.
Yeah. Okay, so again.
It's been motioned.
Do I have a second? I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.